Call him in the order. This is the Economic Council meeting of Monday, February 16, 2015. Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Bukiewicz.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzikowski.
Here. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is the approval of minutes of February 3, 2015.
Bukiewicz will make a motion to approve the minutes of February 3, 2015. Goozy calls Gale second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Epstein.
Under new business, item four is a presentation of the 2014 City of Oak Creek Health Center results.
I'm gonna start with a few comments and then I'm gonna have Judy Melro, Gavin from Wheaton-Francois can come up here and present the results of our first year near-site employee healthcare center. We entered into a three-year contract with Wheaton-Francois to help us contain healthcare costs by providing additional wellness activities, educational activities, and direct healthcare services to employees. We knew that there was going to be a lag time in terms of the employees getting familiar with that system and utilizing the system. We are seeing upticks in utilization. Some of the program changes that we made to the healthcare this year with some additional deductibles should help drive some of our healthcare to the center and improve some of our results. But I want Judy to come up. She's done a very nice job, meeting with our staff and also with Burke Wald in designing the program and, well, I'll let her make her presentation.
Welcome Judy.
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you for having me. I do have in front of you just a few documents, and the first one being the highlight report, and I'm just gonna kinda zip through that, but if you have questions, feel free to ask. Just generally speaking, just wanted to share with you kinda where we were year end, and I know there are two documents behind that which show what we refer to as a cost savings report. Those numbers just kinda funnel up to what I have on the highlight report. And please keep in mind that we create our reports based on the hospital's fiscal year, which goes from July 1 through June 30, so just so I don't wanna confuse anyone. But as we look at that, we know that our net, actually net cost for the first six months was $57,682, and then for the second six months, which was the last part of the year, 28, right around 28.9 for the last half of the year. And the total billed services for the entire year was approximately $176,000. But then as you look at and make the comparison of what those visits would have cost, the idea is, of course, to increase utilization so that this year we see above a break-even on that. We wanna get more of these folks, as Jerry had mentioned, to utilize the health center, and there are some things that I think are going to help in making that happen. Of course, one being that there was a benefit change, and certainly it's a great alternative for folks to be able to utilize that, so. And I could talk a little more about some of the things we're doing. But one of the other things I wanted to make note of was that we did roll out now the health risk assessments with the new vendor this year. And of course, we had 50 completed for the firefighter physicals, and then also 311 completed outside of that. And the score, the scores here, clearly the folks at the Oak Creek, City of Oak Creek are very accustomed to doing these things, so you have some great participation. So that's wonderful. And those scores, for those of you who may not know that, are really relatively high compared to some other employers where we see that. Education sessions, we also have had a number of educational sessions that we've brought here, and one of our hopes is to also increase the participation in those as well. I know that's one of the things we're working closely with Burke Wald and the folks here at trying to design some programs that'll gather some more interest around that health education as well. And looking ahead to 2015, again, we have also worked through a couple of, I guess, growing pains, if you will, making a change to a new vendor during the health risk assessments, and of course, the change, working with Wheaton as well with the clinic. I know that we're tweaking some of those processes, so they will be even more smoother as we have already started this year. We are also considering some alternative options for the educational sessions. And then flipping to the back of the page, one of the things that we are also working with Burke Wald on is creating a really defined and formal wellness program as well. And one of those pieces will be to incorporate what we're utilizing the health center for. So I know on the last piece of paper, there's a health promotion and wellness flyer that we put together, and that is an incentive for employees to really, really actively participate in this program. And the hope is that we will have many, many more people than 25 signed up, but the idea is we wanna incent folks to utilize this program. And we will be able to have some very specifics on clinical outcomes with respects to that program at the end of a three-month time period, and then the hope will be to continue that wellness program on, through the duration of the year as well, so that we get more and more folks to participate. That is a very brief rundown, but certainly if you have other questions, I am happy to answer those.
Questions on the Wheaton Wellness and Health Initiative? Everybody thinks you're doing a great job.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks to Wheaton as well.
Involved audience than we did back in December with employees when we were looking at healthcare. But this is really how we control our costs, by providing options, affordable options to the employees, so employees can go and take these health center activities, which are at a fixed fee, fixed monthly fee, and they've got a $5 copay. And oftentimes, we even waive those copays, so we're trying to utilize these more cost-effective services. We're trying very hard to get employees to utilize those services so that we don't have some of the same kind of benefit revisions on an annual basis that we've been seeing the last few years. So it's really important that we promote this, that we let you know that we've got these options out there, and that we need to have the employees participating, and it's not through any lack of effort or creative programs. We just are seeing people being fairly slow to take it up, so.
I can personally tell you that Wheaton's a fantastic facility. They've helped me in a lot of initiatives. Even though it's in Franklin, they're really part of our community as well, so pass that on. Thanks Judy. Anything else? All right, moving on to item five, it's a motion to make the final determination as to the security configuration of the City Hall Public Service Counter. I also have, when we get into it, I have a communication from the chief expressing some comments. Doug? Did you have something there?
Well, I thought the plan was that we were gonna...
We'll hold this off till the end and...
Hold it till the end, right?
Certain portions will be in open session, certain portions will be in closed session.
No one told me the plan. Sorry. It's all right. All right, then we're gonna move on. We're gonna hold that one for now and move it later in the meeting. Items six, seven, eight, and nine are all holds. So we're gonna go right to 10, which is the vendor summary report, the amount of $193,391.36. In 2015, vendor summary report, the amount of $272,693.36 for a combined total of $466,081.99. Finance director is here. Questions, comments? Do you have some comments? Okay, all yours.
This will be your last AP run.
You're good.
This will be our last AP run charging back to 2014, so.
Okay.
Just about getting, just about getting to the end of...
End of year, Mike.
Just pull it up a little bit. There you go.
Just about getting to the end of the year where we are ready to start closing out the books for audit.
Awesome. Questions? Nothing from Ken?
Nope.
All right. All right, moving on. Well, actually, we need a motion, so we need a motion on 10.
Gale moves to approve the 2014 vendor summary report in the amount of $193,391.36 and the 2015 vendor summary report in the amount of $272,690.63 for a combined total of $466,081.99.
Goozy calls Gale second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Under engineering, item 11 is a motion to enter a design and construction services contract with the consulting engineering firm SEH for Abbotshine Park Phase III for a not-to-exceed amount of $43,626 for project number 15015 in the 3rd District. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the next phase of the development of Abbotshine Park. And includes additional pathways, native planting areas, and a third pedestrian bridge over the creek. There's a graphic on the screen, so maybe just walk you through it real briefly. The green that you see is the proposed asphalt pathways extending from the existing parking lot at the main entrance and then crossing the creek. This is the location of the proposed pedestrian bridge, and then tying back into the pathway on the east side of the creek, which was the initial phase of the construction. And then what you see here in orange is the, it's proposed wood chip pathway, so in total, a little over a mile of additional pathways. They'd be clearing some woods here, just along the length of the pathway, or just kind of a scenic walk. Doug, we should have the next graphic, please.
Just before he flips, is that, you know, what the length of that whole thing is for someone that might be interested to know how far that is?
There's a loop here that is gonna be completed along the green, that crosses over the pedestrian bridge here, gets you back to the start, and it's just about a mile in length, so that's a real good length. And really, the subject of this item is the design and construction of the third pedestrian bridge. This is one of the other bridges that was constructed in 2012, and this would be the same design for this bridge.
Any problems or concerns with those bridges that we put in already?
No problems at all. A lot of good feedback on them. They're attractive and, of course, very functional, so.
They look good.
So basically, then, what we were hoping we could do would be to work with the same engineer that designed the first bridges. That firm was Yegi Kolbe. They are now SEH Engineering Firm. And basically, we contacted them and asked them, you know, for a proposal. They came with a proposal. We basically talked a little bit more about it and explained how we were looking for some efficiencies in the previous design. They came back with the number that you see here, the $43,626. That breaks down to just under $30,000 for the design services and just under $14,000 for the construction services. Construction services is the staking of the bridge, the testing, materials testing, and inspection of the abutment construction, and then, of course, the placement of the bridge. If you recall, in 2012, these bridges come in pre-constructed, lifted with a crane onto the cast-and-place abutments. So I don't know if I have anything more to add. Any questions?
Mike, how much are those bridges again?
Excuse me?
How much approximately for a bridge like that?
We have an estimate of $175,000 for the bridge.
Installed, or?
Yes.
And what's the overall, this phase, do you remember what the kind of ballpark?
Yes, it's about $400,000.
And that potential chip path, has that been grubbed already, or is that yet to be done?
Nothing's been done with that yet.
Alderman, Ritz?
You know, Mike, you and I have talked about this before. We have some neighbors that are concerned about the distance of the pathways as we move forward. Obviously, this is design services and that's gonna impact that we're having a completed program or something.
Correct. Yes, yeah. You recall, we talked about different ways that we might reach out to these, to the adjacent property owners, particularly the ones that have concerns about it. You know, there's leeway on where that pathway can go. We like to keep it somewhat in a loop of the outside limits of the park. Again, we've got some leeway to move it maybe a bit north of that south property line.
Okay. What's the concern?
That in some spaces, the path will be coming right up against their backyard. And as we talk, Mike and I talked about it, there's room to move it, so it's not right on top of them.
Yeah, there's, yep, the properties up front on Forest Hill, those are rather long and deep properties, and some of the homes are, a couple of homes are, you know, fairly close to the south property line of the park. So there are just concerns about, you know, just bringing people closer to their backs of their property.
There's nothing stopping people from walking there right now.
That's correct. What you see here is all the disc golf holes, I guess, if you wanna call them. So, yeah, there's people back there now.
But this will be a formal path, so.
Done? Alderman Bukiewicz?
Just a little bit of comment from Park and Rec when we got into this phase and we looked at the things that could be done. They tried to stick within budget, and the bridge really soaks up a lot of money in this particular phase, so they went with something that would be lasting and probably beneficial, and they went with the path and the walkways, because there are other things slated back there, but they disrupt the disc golf, and they just get into a lot of complications that we weren't ready for. So the pathway, just to reference that, in Willow Heights Park is a similar walkway, which kinda defines the park. It kinda encircles the park. And it gives people about a 10-foot buffer, if not a little better off their property lines, that the city maintains there. So as Jim alluded to, there is probably some give and take there. As far as the paths in the red that are gonna be cut in there and grubbed out, as Ken alluded to, we also talked about making that just natural chips, which will be provided by the city. So it'll be easy to maintain. It'll be a place to go with our mulch as we grind it up at the city yard. And actually, I do believe the street department was gonna be active in that, and the Parks Department putting that in to help save costs, just to point out, so.
Any other questions? Motion?
Ritz will make a motion to adopt or enter into a design and construction services contract with the consulting engineering firm SEH for Abbotshine Park Phase III for a not-to-exceed amount of $43,626, project number 15015.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye. Under community development, we have item 12 as a consideration of resolution number 11594-021615 approving a certified survey map for the property at 7902 South Sixth Street in the 2nd District.
Thank you. The next three items on the agenda all have to do with land divisions, which are the logical succession of the development of the Drexel Town Square Development. The first CSM at 7902 South Sixth Street takes the parcel, which is just to the east of Sixth Street and just south of Drexel Avenue, divides that into two parcels in accordance with the first-generation development proposal. And if you don't mind, I'm just gonna go through all of them at the same time, and then we can take action individually. The second CSM, we can get it here. For the property at 601 West Drexel Avenue, is a large parcel, which is to the west of Sixth Street, generally containing the site for the multifamily residential development, as well as the medical office development and the park portion of that. So that will take that and then subdivide that into a lot for the, again, as I said earlier, the medical office, the Barrett Development, as well as the Wetland Park. And finally, the third certified survey map will re-divide the multifamily residential portion, or that proposed lot, into two parcels in accordance with the phasing plan for the Barrett Residential Development.
Questions on 12? Alderman Bukiewicz?
Actually, it's for 14.
Okay, any questions on 12? Motion on 12?
Bukiewicz will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11594021615 approving a certified survey map for the property at 7902 South Sixth. Do we have to, and this pertains to 14, are all technical corrections made, or are they pending yet?
They are pending.
They are pending?
Yep.
So can I just add pending technical corrections?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ritz will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Any questions on 13? Motion?
Bukiewicz will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11595021615 approving a certified survey map for the property at 601 West Drexel with all technical corrections.
Ritz will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And on 14, Alderman Bukiewicz has a question?
It pertained to the, there was a easement that had to be put in the technical corrections, and at planning, it was explained by engineering. It was just a technical correction, and that's why I wanted to know if it was worked out or if we have to include it in the motion.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion?
Bukiewicz will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11596021615 approving a certified survey tape...
After the closed session.
For the property at 601 West Drexel Avenue, subject to all technical corrections being made.
Ritz will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Moving on to licensing, item 15 is a motion, I'll let Alderman Ritz read those.
The license committee did not meet prior to tonight's meeting. The tentative recommendations are being made as follows. Ritz will make a motion to grant an operator's license to David Zalkowski, 4943 South, I'm sorry, 65th Court, Greenfield, for Buffalo Wild Wings. Favorable background report was received.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Ritz will make a motion to grant a 2015 landfill license to 9648 South Chicago Road LLC and 9666 South Chicago Road LLC, John O'Malley, O'Malley Investments Agent, 5200 West Loomis Road, Greendale, for the property located at 9648 and 9666 South Chicago Avenue, Road. I'm sorry, thank you, Road. Favorable department approvals were received.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Number 17, Ritz will make a motion to grant a 2014-15 Class A combination license to Christopher Hoffman, agent for Meyer Stores Limited Partnership, DBA Meyer Store 263, 161 West Town Square Way, with issuance subject to sanitary inspection and issuance of occupancy permit.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
171.
171 West Town Square Way.
Six.
171 it is.
Catch by the city attorney?
Aye.
Gale.
I'm here for him.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Ritz will make a motion to grant a 2014-15 Class A combination license to Christopher Hoffman, agent for Meyer Stores Limited Partnership, DBA Meyer Store number 263, gas station at 8031 South Howell, with issuance subject to sanitary inspection and issuance of occupancy permit.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
19.
Ritz will make a motion to grant a change of agent to QuickTrip, DBA QuickTrip, I'm sorry, QuickTrip Inc., DBA QuickTrip, number 422, at 9535 South 13th Street, from Stacy Anderson to Richard McCord, 2663 South Howell Avenue. Favorable background report was received.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And finally, Ritz will make a motion to grant a change of agent to Megamart's LLC, DBA Pick 'n Save, number 6387, at 2320 West Ryan Road, from Jacqueline Colbert to Peter Ducek, 3525 Wright Avenue, received. Favorable background report was received.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Item 21 is a consideration of a motion to convene in a closed session immediately following the conclusion of the Common Council meeting pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.851(c) to (a) discuss the performance evaluation, wages, and benefits for the city administrator, and (b) Section 19.851(d) to consider a strategy for security measures at city-owned buildings as it relates to crime prevention.
Excuse me, Steve, are we doing five, or are we doing that after?
After closed session, I was just gonna make that comment. So five will be after closed session. Ken?
Gale will move to convene in the closed session immediately following the conclusion of the Common Council meeting pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85 Sub(1) Sub(c) to discuss the performance evaluation, wages, and benefits for the city administrator.
Terminal second.
Sorry.
Hold on one second.
And also to consider, Section 19.85 Sub(1) Sub(d), to consider a strategy for security measures at city-owned buildings as it relates to crime prevention.
Terminal seconds.
Terminal seconds. Roll call. Just a comment, Mayor. Follow one second, comment from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just with respect to item B, crime prevention measures at the new City Hall, that's related to item five, and just for the public and for the council, there are many aspects, this relates to the, basically, the front desk counter, or what are we calling it, at consumer counter at the new City Hall, and there are many aspects of this that are not at all appropriate for closed session, but there are some security-related measures, and that's the reason for the closed session. So we're gonna discuss only those security-related measures in closed session. As, after we come out into open session, the discussion will expand to other aspects of that issue that are not security-related.
Okay? I had a second. Did I have a roll call? Roll call.
Alderman Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
This time, we're going to closed session. We'll turn off the cameras. We'll turn the cameras back on when we come back into open session. We'll discuss item five. All right, we're back.
Gale moves to reconvene in the open session.
Goozy calls Gale second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
And we're going back to item five, which is a consideration of a motion to make the final determination as to the security configuration of the City Hall Public Service Counter. Doug?
Thank you. Based on some of the items that were discussed in closed session, which we will not get into the details of, I understand there might be a motion that's in order to direct staff and the architect to finalize the design for the City Hall Public Service Counter, and if we had such a motion, second, be happy to entertain a discussion, or at the pleasure of the mayor and council, to open it up to comments from the audience.
Any comments anyone needs to make or wants to make?
Arden Digger, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Apparently, this will be completely encased, somewhat like these filling stations, so they will not be able to see a face at all.
Actually, no, Arden, it's going, we're gonna have three, pretty wide openings that will be opened.
Oh, there will be some openings.
Yeah. Three of them.
Oh, good, good, good. At least we get a...
Arden, he's pointing out to you with the pointer there. And given the nature of the, there'd be three stations, and there'd be the three open areas, they're by, be at least three by three, they might be a little bit taller, but there'll be an area where, between you and the customer, where there wouldn't be any obstruction.
Oh, that's good. At least we'll be able to see what color their eyes are. Usually, you got more problems than that. Usually, you're trying to figure out how much you owe.
Thank you, Arden. So we need a motion, and the motion will have to mention the option that was agreed upon. Ken? Ken?
We ready for that? Gale will make then the recommendation. We will move to make the final determination of security confusion in City Hall Public Service Counter as recommended in Exhibit 5, or 3b.
Gruzykowski, second.
Subject to...
Adjust the height as recommended by staff.
You had a subject to?
Just what he said.
Okay. Seconded by?
Bukowski.
Bukowski, roll call.
Alderman, Tillman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Bukowski?
Aye.